Call a meeting to order and is there any agenda additions or deletions? Does anybody have anything? Hearing none, approval of the April tenth minutes.
So moved.
Second?
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Cash isn't going to be here tonight?
Um, I don't believe so, but I have a couple of things to say on his behalf.
Okay, well, speak up.
Um, so the road crew is thinking about renting a man lift from a local in town. Cash wanted me to throw that out there. Um, John Conley stopped in from Alpine Construction. They had their pre-construction meeting with the state and the state was fine with closing Gorge Road or having it closed. Just kind of worked with the district three guys and we'll get the traffic sketch to the state. Um, and then I did send out the letters to the tier road property owners about the survey. Um, I sent out certified mail and got three back so far. And then I did get a call from Pat Lanfear today and the four neighbors have talked and are requesting a meeting with the select board before the survey and I think up there.
On site, is that what you're saying?
With all five board members there. So.
Is that prior to the or after?
Before the survey takes place.
Did we get any reason why? I mean, the town has the right to survey any of its roads at any time, so just curious.
I, I don't know, I think maybe just some open discussion. She mentioned her, she spoke with her lawyer and her lawyer advised that the town should have good reason why they're not planning on surveying more of that section of road or like up the road.
Which, which location is theirs?
Where the Lanfears are, um, they're right off of Walker Mountain.
That's what I thought, okay, I know where they are. Thank you.
What's the man lift for?
Um, I think we want to use it to cut trees.
What's the feeling of the board, do we? Want to all meet up there or ask them to come down to the town hall?
Well, I, I would, my personal thought is if they have some notion that they want to show us something or pace something out or measure something, that makes sense. But if they just want to do it for, they want us to do it, I would say have them come here. That's how I kind of feel about it. I mean, if there's a reason for it, sure.
What you thinking?
I'm thinking, I don't know. It's, I, I said to the board, this is a, this is a sticky situation. Anytime we stepped into this one, so I, I don't know what the best plan of action is.
You think, Art?
Why, why do they want us to go up there? I mean, they must have a reason they want us to go up there.
Yeah, that's, that's my point.
I mean, the other thing is-
If they have a reason, I, I don't have a problem going there.
The only other thought that my mind goes to is if we're up there, we obviously don't have PEG TV, so other townspeople wouldn't be aware of what we discuss. That doesn't mean we can't come back and report it, but.
I told her I would discuss it with you and give her a call back and I can say that they're willing to meet with you here.
Well, I mean, it's been explained and did, I guess I need to remind, go back and look at your letter again, but um, didn't the letter even reference that this is in relationship to a-
Potential road project.
A road project, which at this point, it's been pretty openly discussed, the fact that that section of road has been targeted by the state. It's not, it's not us targeting it, the state has put it on our list.
I did-
That it has to be addressed.
And I discussed that with her, I said, like, this is, we're under a state permit where we have to improve ditches and water quality in that area is not good, so that's why the road project is being discussed.
Did you get any feedback when you mentioned that?
Not a whole lot. We kind of, yeah. We discussed back and forth a lot of the issues that have been happening over the years that we already know about.
I was gonna say, because we had, you had, how long were, had you been on the board when we had our first site visit up there? Were you fresh to it, weren't you?
Yeah, pretty much, yeah.
Because we, I was gonna say, we've, I mean, we had a site visit up there already. I don't know, I don't know what I think.
Would the board, uh-
How many, how many neighbors are, are we talking about that want to meet with us?
There's only four that I sent letters to.
I was gonna say, it's just that-
Two on two, yeah.
All four are gonna meet with us or just?
She said the neighbors have talked and all four of them are in favor of meeting with the board.
So invite them now.
I don't have, I don't have a problem either way.
Yeah, I, I think that it's important that they give us some kind of a specific motion as to why, other than just coming up and have a general conversation.
I mean, because all we're doing at this point is surveying where our boundaries are.
Yep.
As, for the road right of way, I mean, that's all we've authorized at this point.
Yep.
Which, and maybe this is something we need to ask leagues to, to make sure, but as far as I'm aware, based on state statute, a town can survey its right of way of any road at any time. Because-
Depending on the class.
Well, that's, the, the survey markings are going to be determined by class.
Right, but what, what happened, has happened in the past is that, um, when we wanted to upgrade Quarterline Road-
Mm-hmm.
That section, we had to jump through a few hoops there, if you recall, because-
Before me.
Was it a clear class four or was it a legal class three? And so we had to, uh, Norm could speak to it more, but that's where we had guys come in and survey and find the property mark, of property boundaries. Before we widened the road out and stuff.
Yeah, that's, that's before me.
Right, Bob, do you remember when we, we had a, yeah, jumped through some of that stuff, but anyway.
But you had a right to, what came back is the, the town had the right to survey the road.
Yes.
Yes, but whether to keep it a class four or to upgrade it to the class three with-
Correct.
That's where the argument was.
But what I'm saying for this, there's not an argument what class road this is.
Yeah, class three.
This is class three, so, or, no, is it class three or class two?
Oh, it's class three, I think, I'm pretty sure it's class three road.
Is that, okay, so either way, the town, again, going back to it, and maybe this is just something that we need to ensure is true, the town, maybe I'm going out on a limb, but by state statute has, has the right at any time to survey a section of road.
I mean, that makes logical sense to me.
Yeah, but, but let's, I think there was a suggestion, Robbie, I think you-
I, I mean-
Call up leagues and-
Just to be sure.
And to, so then, then, once we get that information, that the town has the right to, to survey an existing road, uh, then we can get back to those folks if they want to meet up there or meet down here. Will this just, when is that survey supposed to start that up?
First week of June, which-
Yeah.
So it's a month away.
Is there an issue, are they saying that they're, we're not allowed to survey it?
No.
So why are we even bothering asking leagues?
Find out what they want first.
Yeah, let's find out what they want.
Okay.
They want, they might want anything, right?
I was, maybe I was reading into it too much that they're saying we don't have the right.
I don't, I didn't hear that.
No.
Okay.
I think-
I was, okay, so, I apologize, I was reading into it too much because my-
When they say that, then it's like, okay, now-
Because my, my assumption was that they were having an issue with us surveying it. Based on your comment about the lawyer saying that we needed a rea, a reason.
Well, so she mentioned that, that's what her lawyer thought, because she thinks when you go up the road, it's like a cow path and where they are, it's becoming a two-lane highway.
Yes, she, she did mention that to me on telephone call a few weeks ago, about how come we're only doing this section and that, and my, you know, discussion with her was the fact that there's been so much conflict lately that we just wanted to make sure that because you had your property surveyed, we want to make sure that the town legal right of way is also established in that area. Does not mean that we're going to go putting ditches in everything, that's what she, it all depends on what the state is telling us we have to do.
So going back to the lawyer comment though, is the question of whether or not we have the right to do it or not?
I'm not sure. I can go back to her.
Tell her to-
I mean, I think she did mention that, that is a question they have. Is why you're only gonna survey that one section, not farther up the road. But my thought is, if you know your town boundary, like your right of way, shouldn't that follow right up through? Like-
We're only doing that section because-
That's where the road project, right.
That's what the state has told us we have to address.
And we've had questions from them as to where our boundaries are, so we're gonna want to establish legally where the boundaries are.
Well, in any, any, twain on any kind of road of that nature, you have certain footage from the center line of the road, the question is how the hell do you make sure exactly what the center line is?
Correct. So, so I guess hearing all of that, I think it would be more appropriate right now, because quite frankly, there's nothing for us to do up there. We've already been up there. The reason we're getting a survey is to determine exactly what George just talked about.
Yep.
The whole point, because they're gonna research historic maps from who knows how long ago that shows where the road was and all of that, they're gonna determine where the boundaries are. If they want to have a conversation before the survey, I say invite them down here and let's do it right here. Because there, there's nothing, again, we've been up there. I know, George, you weren't with us at that point, but the three of us at least walked up and down that road. I mean, we, the, the road hasn't changed since we were there eight months ago, nine months ago, whatever it was. So if they, if the residents, you know, the, the group of them, the four of them, want to come and have a discussion and want to hear more about what we're doing and why we're doing it, invite them down, is what I would say.
Kind of the answer to their, if they have maps and documentations, that would be something that the, they gotta talk to the surveyor about.
What we're looking at is two meetings before the start of that survey. So if you want to make a motion with what you're speaking about, to have them come to our next meeting, the first meeting in May.
Uh, yeah, I mean, just, I would say that-
Request that.
I would say, and I don't know if it needs to be a motion or not, if it, I don't think it needs to be a motion, but just, I would recommend that Katie draft a letter and, and mail it again, I know it's a pain, but send four more certified letters inviting them to the next select board meeting to come on down and discuss what's going on.
Um, I do just a note, Katie did say that she was very adamant that it was important that all members of the board be present, including Cash. You're not going to be here at that meeting. So not all members of the board are going to be at the next meeting, just so you know.
Who's absent?
Robert.
I am.
Well-
I've been informed, I'm absent. So if that's the case, then-
You're gonna be in Tennessee, so.
Yeah, if that's the case, it's gonna have to be, um, the second meeting of-
Unless we hold a special meeting and the, I'd rather have it on film.
I, I would stick to that second meeting in May. I'll be here for that one. Is everybody else here for second?
I don't know, Cash is, he's on vacation that week, I think. I have no idea.
So let's put it this way, touch base with Cash and if he is here, let's schedule it for that second meeting in May. And if not, we're gonna have to go back to the drawing board.
Which would be a special meeting.
Yeah, like our, our survey is planned to come out, we've signed off that he's coming that first week.
I was gonna say, he's scheduled, so.
So I'll send, I talked to Cash, see if he's gonna be here for the second meeting, and if so, send the letters. And if not, we'll have a special meeting date.
We gotta, we gotta come back and discuss it and determine what we're gonna do, if he's not gonna be here.
How's the old earlier atmosphere of previous meetings with these folks?
It's varied. In my opinion, it's varied.
Is there any value in terms of, of setting some sort of a willingness to be available and going there in terms of smoothing feathers or whatever, I don't know. I mean, I personally think we ought to have them come here unless there's a compelling reason.
Mm-hmm. The, the other thing is, is that by law-
Yeah.
This meeting can function as long as there is a quorum of this board.
Of course you can.
So, um, I, I know the request is for everybody to be here, but if that's not physically possible-
Then it's not possible.
It's not possible and this board is still by law able to function as long as there's a quorum present.
That's correct.
So.
So if that's the case, then why put it off to the second meeting?
Give them their choice.
Yeah, you have, you have the choice of the next meeting or the second meeting in May.
And just be aware that may, as long as the quorum is there, we can operate.
Mm-hmm. That's, I mean, that's true.
Because I want to get this over with. We have, you know, we already made a decision, I prefer having it at a meeting where PEG TV is here, so that it's on.
I mean, the other thing is, is the, this is not the, this is not what I consider is going to be the hard discussion. Because the hard discussion comes what, a month and a half from now, when we really are talking about what the recommendations for the road for this summer are. I mean, that's, that's gonna be, that's gonna be when the tough conversations are gonna happen. Um, this is, this is very much preliminary work, just to determine where the boundaries are. Um, and I mean, if they're concerned that their survey is not going to be taken into account, their survey was put on file with the town as well, and that's gonna be researched by our surveyor when our surveyor starts working, so.
But there, in, in conversations, I don't know if she mentioned this to you, but to me, she mentioned this several times, that they're aware that that fence that's on their property, because of the research and uh, work that was done by their surveyor, is on the town road-
Yeah.
Right of way.
Yeah, and we talked about that when we went up there that day.
Yes. Uh, so I think that that's more or less, I think one of the biggest concerns, or at least the concern that was expressed to me was that they don't want a three-foot deep ditch on their side of the road. That's what they're concerned about.
Which that conversation's not even gonna be had, and, and quite frankly, it, in a meeting where we all sit down, we can't even have that conversation right now, because we can't even talk about what the design is, because we don't even know yet.
We don't have a design.
There's no, there's no design actually in hand yet for what to do. So. I, I don't know. I, I would say invite them down. If they push back and say that they want us to come up there, then we've got to cross that bridge. But I would say start with an invitation.
Yeah.
To?
The four landowners to come down.
To which meeting, the first one?
First one.
Or check with Cash and do the second one.
I think it's more important-
To get it done.
Yeah, to get it done sooner rather than later.
Can't go to Tennessee. I'll be in Tennessee.
Can get you on that.
You gotta stay.
By phone.
You gotta go by yourself?
I'll just contact, that night.
You can see it on that, by phone, yeah, speak up, I can't hear you.
So I'm gonna send four certified letters inviting them to the first meeting in May.
Yep. Yep. And, and the thing is, the reality is, if they're concerned about everybody not being here, if it's here and Williams here and films it, I can go back and watch it.
Yep.
So I'm gonna hear the exact same thing that everybody else is, because it's, it's up on PEG TV for weeks, so. I mean, that's, that's the other reality, that's the other benefit for it being here, and that can be something you can even throw in the letter, the fact that if somebody's absent, if it's in the town hall, the absent board member will be able to go back and watch the discussion.
Also works if any of them are absent.
That's right. Yep, works both ways.
It does. All right. We're on the road commissioner's report from Katie.
Yeah. Anything else, Katie?
Well, the man lift.
I didn't have much more on that, I don't think.
For cutting trees?
Yes.
Can, I guess I would like more explanation of, like-
Why or?
Why or, like, typically, typically if we need tree service, we bring in a tree service and we cut trees, like.
I'm not sure why they're not going that route. I, I don't have a ton of information beyond they're hoping to rent from a local and then be able to use it, instead of renting it from a rental company, they could use it kind of as needed, depending on the weather, and they're not gonna get charged.
So they have no specific need for it right now, they just, in case they want to do some trimming?
They, they want it, and then they want to start cutting trees once they have it in place.
Well, there's a lot of issues, you know, if there's around wires and stuff like this. Man lifts and-
I think I'd like to also know, like, where are we talking? Like, are we, do, do we have a list of roads that-
I think I heard West Timoth Road and maybe some on Quarterline Road.
Okay. How many foot, how many foot lift is it?
Do you have a pole saw?
I don't know. Just a messenger.
Have you used it, yeah, okay, yeah.
Must be a farm with a bucking tractor.
Yeah, OSHA would like that, probably, yeah.
Um, you know, unless we have some more information, I don't want to go down this trail personally.
What do you want me to suggest to them, like hire a tree company or?
Well, I guess my other question too is-
More detailed report or request?
Yeah, more detail on what they're looking for, but the other thing too is, um, have we, I mean, we are, Matt just joked about it, but we're subject to OSHA, VOSHA and all of those, have we looked into those requirements? Because man lifts are usually very designated as to what you're using them for, and is cutting tree limbs a certified VOSHA, OSHA use? Are they gonna, are they gonna, because if not, VOSHA or OSHA is gonna roll up and say, oh, you're cutting limbs off of a whatever, here's, you're fine, and go put that thing away.
I can definitely look into that.
I don't know, I, I guess that's where I'm at.
Oh, I agree. I agree. Yep, having, uh, cut tree limbs and stuff in a bucket truck that was designed for that job-
Sure.
Makes me a little nervous about man lifts.
You guys, you were supposed to have safety harnesses and all that stuff.
Yeah, yeah, you are.
And what, I guess, just because to me, cutting trees is gonna pose a higher risk of that man lift getting damaged, whether it catches a hydraulic line or whether it, who knows what? Who's responsible for the lift if it gets damaged?
So Cash wanted it to be under our insurance.
Cash wanted what?
Like for our insurance to cover the lift while we are having it in use.
Well, we better find out if we're capable of-
What kind of training is involved too, I mean, can anybody just use a man lift or is there some?
I'm not sure, I did talk to our insurance about how I would need to word it on a contract for us to cover it, and they gave me language for that.
Okay, but what kind of policy were you looking at too? Because if you're talking that we're gonna cover damage to the machine, that's usually a higher policy than just a liability coverage.
She-
Because standard liability is typically going to be just for, like, injury. If somebody gets injured using it, it's not gonna actually cover damage.
So she said that, um, typical language, general liable, general liability limits of $2 million per occurrence, bodily and property damage with a $4 million aggregate, naming the rental company as additionally insured. Note that the passive coverage is $10 million limits per occurrence.
So liability in bodily and property, which means if you damage somebody's property in the process, but that's not the actual property of, that's not the actual equipment.
No.
That's if you damage somebody's-
It might be, because it's not our equipment, so it might.
I guess I would ask that question. Normally, like, my policies that I'm used to, that would not cover the machine. That would cover if you do something, so let's say they're cutting a tree limb, somebody drives underneath and it hits a towns person's car while they're driving underneath or something like that, that $2 million out of $1 million is gonna cover something like that, but it's not necessarily gonna cover the machine itself, but it may, I mean, it, you would want that in writing, big time.
Okay.
Yeah, but for me though, especially with man lifts, they're so, they're not like a bucket truck that has four feet-
Feet, yeah.
Yeah, and they're, they're very unstable.
Yeah.
If you're on, if you're on a hill or a, yeah, that's-
Even the crown of the road.
Well, and they go over center and they-
You're done.
Yeah, I, I don't-
I think this idea came from finding the cheapest solution to cut trees, which is, about this, rather than like renting-
They want it might be cheap, they too though.
I know.
I don't, I don't, I think I want to have a, a, a full discussion with Cash present before we even go down that path. You could find out, as Robbie's hoping that you make some phone calls to find out what coverage is or whatever.
What that covers, because-
I'll CC you on the emails, because I don't know what I'm talking about when it comes to that type of-
Because if it doesn't cover the actual equipment, that means we're, I mean, if I, if I know who you're renting from, they're not covering the machine while we have it in our possession. So if that machine gets wrecked-
Yeah.
We're gonna be expected to replace it.
Right, and I gave her like the VIN number and what they place the value at, and I assumed that meant that it would cover that if it was damaged.
But I'm willing to bet that none of our employees have ever cut trees out of a, especially that kind of a device.
I'm not sure, I think maybe one of them has, but I can't confirm.
So the way you have to word it to her, if you gave her a replacement value, just out of curiosity, what was it?
$30,000.
Okay, not cheap. So if, if you gave her a replacement value of $30,000, you need to find out, is the coverage replacement value coverage for damage to the machine? So if, again, if a lift go, if, if a big branch falls down and takes out the motor or whatever, and it's essentially got to be replaced, is their insurance policy going to pay for the replacement of that machine? So it's, it's actually, they refer to it as replacement coverage. So is there replacement coverage on the machine within this policy? And if she says no, then the town's on the hook for 30 grand if it gets wrecked. And that would have to be paid for out of taxpayer dollars, which probably would not be looked upon too kindly by our taxpayers.
We've always had tree crews come in and do-
I was gonna say, let, let, let's get a-
Well, I was gonna say, do you want me to check in with VOSHA first and then the insurance, like, are you good with this idea or?
Well, what, what are we, what are we comparing? I mean, we need to know what it would cost to have a tree service come in and do trees.
Do those roads.
Yeah, that, that they want done, I mean, if we're, if-
I mean, are, are-
How much are we gonna save?
The other question that I would have is, are there lines along those roads that we should be in touch with GMP?
We don't have the information. I'm not the road commissioner. I promise.
Okay. I say we table this until we get Cash.
I'll second that.
Do you want a, a motion?
I'll make it a motion.
Okay.
And I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? So when Cash comes back, prepare him. Okay, what's the grant?
This is to claim funds for next year's construction season. Um, we have the initial offer of $12,000 with a $3,000 in kind match.
Is that this one sheet?
Yeah, I just, I-
That's this one, right?
Yeah, I just need one signed off.
So you need just the chairman, so this is just our intention to apply next year for grants and aid?
Grants and aid, you just send in a letter of intent and then if they accept it, then they send you a grant agreement, and there's no application.
All right, is there a motion for how the-
So moved.
They're second?
I'll second it for discussion, I'm just curious what road this is gonna be, because the last year's was Tier Road.
Yes.
So what would this one be for?
I'm not sure. I just claim the money when it's available and we and Cash discuss when the construction season.
You don't have to specify a road, you just ask for money and you can spend it anywhere you want?
That's how grants and aid has been, it's for the hydrologically connected-
But it has to be on the list. It has to be on the MRGP list.
Yes, it has to go towards roads that are hydrologically connected and need to be upgraded.
Can you give us an idea of- Can you give us an idea of what other roads at this point are on our list that need to be addressed?
Let me pull up my inventory.
I'm looking through this and I don't see any. Thing by any roads. Oh, it doesn't seem to be anything.
I know we have like a few segments here and there, um like on. Quarterline Road, we actually have two more segments, but I think the road crew's gonna be working on them this summer. I know we have a very high priority section on Anderson Hill.
On where?
Anderson Hill.
Okay. This is what we used to go through, right Bob? When we had. Bert used to be the road commissioner, never showed up at meetings, so we never knew what the hell to do.
Well, that's not really fair. I mean, he's been at a lot of the meetings.
Well, because he's the select board.
So if you can kinda see all these with color need to be updated.
So that's our list?
Yes. This is by priority. So some high ones are gravel pit road, tier roads, south tier road, schoolhouse hill road, tier road, west timoth road. These are segments.
They're segment. Yeah, it's not necessarily the whole road. It's just pieces of them. Yeah.
Our very high priority ones, two segments on tier, one on Anderson Hill.
Make a motion that we authorize the chairman to sign the intent.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? What's the pricing sheet here?
Commodity pricing for purchasing policy.
So when we were coming up with a purchasing policy, part of it was every year, the road commissioners. Presents you with a spreadsheet on the commodities and the pricing for each product that we use. So listed there is the price and. I, I'm asking that you approve it for the road commissioner not to exceed spending that per ton or yard or whatever. Um but that gives him the flexibility to shop for the best product for the best price.
This, the prices for this was obtained how?
Um, we went off of sheets that we got from Wallingford Crushstone, Florence Crushstone, Casella.
Did an average or something or a mean?
I took the highest price for that product so that he would not exceed that price.
Got it.
But that gave him the ability to shop with him.
It's a board's pleasure on this. Well. The standpoint that it supposedly represents the existing highest price at this point in time. Not too likely that the prices are gonna go down. foreseeable future, so I, my guess is as good a place to start as any in terms of a ceiling. And if it exceeds a ceiling, then they have to come to us anyway, great.
Correct. The, the understanding of the policy is they have to come back if, if it goes over.
Yes.
Yeah, I wanna just note that like. A lot of these prices are from a pit that we don't often go to. But if a price of a product at another quarry goes up, but they still prefer that product, they're able to. Buy it without having to come before the board because it's still gonna be lower than that threshold.
All right, I move that we. Uh, accept this price list on commodities is the uh high ceiling in each case. Okay. For pricing or for bidding or whatever. There a second to that motion for discussion?
I'll second for discussion. I, I wish we had gotten a copy of what. You base these prices on so that we could see.
I don't have multiple copies. I have one right here. If you wanna review it.
And I see, so the magic, the chloride stuff, the, the spray. On this is set to go up in April. Is that what this means?
Um, I'm not, I'm, I assume it's gonna go up. Cash said probably his guess would be max twenty cents. But he, they were not giving a pricing past April thirty.
Okay. So we're gonna have to revisit that anyway.
Yeah, I think it'll kinda be around the same time that you approve salt prices. Cause that's what he uses to add to the salt.
So you did, just one more time, how many pits did you take when you were looking?
Uh, Cash had four.
Was motion made? Seconded for discussion. We wanna change that from discussion to make a decision?
Well, I, I made the motion as a simply a decision and the, the second was the one that. Stipulated the, for discussion purposes.
Do you wanna change that?
Yeah, I'll second it. I, I think the next time we should get like a range of what. The four pits are, what's the high, what's the low?
What's the low?
So that we can at, at least kinda get an idea. I mean, it's great to set a high mark, but.
Yeah.
It'd be nice to know where we are on our high mark. I mean, at fifteen seventy-five a ton, is it, is that? Five dollars higher than the, the lower one, you know, where are we at?
Yeah.
That's, that's the only question I had.
Afterwards, um, yeah, definitely it's a high end and we don't often shop there.
Yeah, well, that's, so that's why I'd like to know where the other ones are, but as, as far as a high limit, then yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, I think maybe I was misunderstood when I said that. A not to exceed price. Wasn't intended to just be we go through, we pick the highest price on every product.
Intended not to exceed that.
Well, then we can definitely like table this and revise it instead of.
I mean. I guess, I guess I was looking for maybe a little more. Analyzing or evaluating what each product was and. Again, not just slapping out the highest price, but looking at it and saying, oh, okay, well, kinda like what George said, the average, like, oh, this is. On average, this is gonna be, you know, okay, the high price is fifteen seventy-five, but if we approve, you know, thirteen twenty-five, we've. Got it covered and we can, you know. Because my assumption, and I know the road commissioner's not here to ask him, but my assumption is we're not buying the most expensive material. When we go to the pits. At least I hope we're not.
Just a little more information would have been nice so that we could know where, where our range is.
So has it been a motion made and it's been seconded, we've had discussion. Do we want to vote on the motion?
Well, we need to vote or, 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 or not, so I mean, you can always vote it down.
Okay, so all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 I'll say aye. All right, unanimous. But we'll have a discussion with the. Road commissioner when we go through this, probably in the fall. For winter pricing. All right, approval of the select board warrants, they're right here. Anybody wants to look at them? Guests. For Bob.
Last meeting, I was asked to look into. Uh, neighborhood watch a little bit.
Yeah.
I've talked to some people, I've talked to fire department, I've talked to road commissioner, talked to some people around the village and so on. And everybody's interested. I'd like to set up and have a meeting with people. On the third of May at seven o'clock at the Grange Hall. That would be a week from this coming Wednesday night. And meanwhile also. Maybe we could get Gloria to post it on the town website.
Make sure that it's free Wednesday night. Have to make sure it's free Wednesday night.
Yeah.
The Grange Hall.
Cause that normally four H.
I think so. I don't know if it's every Wednesday. I'll make sure. I'll let you know tomorrow.
I haven't heard nothing, but uh, and also too with that meeting, I would like to ask if uh. At least one or maybe a couple of the select board members would attend.
Sure. All right, so when it's confirmed, then we'll talk to each other and see who can show up.
Let's take it from there and see where it goes, uh. But like the fire department, they've got people all over town. And like I said, talking to Cash a little bit, he says they kinda watch for things as they're out traveling around and they know. Pretty much what is where. And something out of place they can, and the people around the village have a fair idea who live there and what's going on. But there are some areas. You get out well, like where Art and Gloria live. I don't know just what could take place up there. Maybe you've got an idea, right?
All, all the neighbors in our, in our section are pretty watchful on what goes on.
Yeah, okay. And we'll start there and then we'll get the board posted where it goes.
I think one of the best things that we can encourage people, just because after what happened to me, we went this route. Cameras now are, if you have wifi in your house, thirty bucks. I mean, it's very, very reasonable.
Yeah.
Cost wise to grab a camera or two. If you've got wifi. You know, at least get your front door covered, at least get, you know, so that you've got. You know, if somebody comes up, you're gonna at least have them, their face. So you've got something that you can turn over to the authorities.
And posting it is a good deterrent.
Yes, it is.
I mean, put a sign up, say you're on, smile, you're on candid camera.
That's right. Yep.
All right, Gloria, you'll get back to this Bob and then also let us know what's, what time is available and see. We'll see who can show up.
Sure.
Sounds good.
If you want Gloria, I'll swing down in the morning and we can do the wording on that.
Sure. Yeah, we could do that.
All right, any public comments? All business.
Did you? Wanna, okay. Just making sure.
In a moment, we'll get to. New business, planning commission appointments. Sarah, would you like to address the board? You, I'm sure you turned a letter in and stuff.
Yes, I did. I sent a letter to Katie saying I'm interested in the, um, being on the planning commission board, the secretary.
Um, would anybody like to make?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Anyone opposed? Looks like, congratulations.
Yeah.
How many vacancies does that leave us, just out of curiosity?
Think one.
Still one?
Yeah, I think. And just as an update, John McKenna is now the chair.
Chair.
And Bronson's vice chair.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Are they still working as they?
I think they are going to continue meeting jointly, right?
Just curious. Let us know how, how you like it or what you think or something. Yeah, be good. All right, moving along, Rec Field mowing contract.
Rec, rec chairman over there?
Yeah, we got one bid this year. Uh, it was the same guy that did it the last few years. Uh, the guy that took over for the guy last year and stuff.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it wasn't the guy that we had last year, it was the guy that took over for the guy that we had last year and the guy.
We don't talk about that.
Yeah.
Yeah, please.
Um, so also to note, um, the bid sheet that was turned in didn't have the additional mowing and trimming hourly rate. So I contacted him directly and he said it'd be seventy-five an hour, so that is in the contract as well. That's a tidbit of information you didn't have.
And uh, looks like it's just the select board chair would sign.
We're gonna do the mowings for the, for the whole entire, the year, I mean, for the uh.
Fiscal year.
Fiscal year.
Yeah.
So moved.
George beat you, Art. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Say aye from in there?
Remember Art Knox was in there?
Yes, we yelled in and he yelled back.
I, I have to point out, Mr. Chairman, that I was able to beat Art because I'm probably a little younger than Art.
So I signed that. I don't know, have you hit fifty yet, Art?
While ago.
Says in the presence of witness as to municipality. Do you hit this?
Anyone could witness it.
Anybody can witness? You need me to sign it?
Sure. What's that other thing, uh, Katie on them?
I just included his insurance and his bid sheet in the whole document.
Arbitration?
Oh, it's the lawsuit clause.
Well, that's goes right with the. Yeah, that goes right with the uh, contract. All right, M E R P, mini grant, four grand.
Oh, you skipped one.
Thank you.
I skipped that.
I did that for a reason. Okay, local emergency management plan.
Any changes, Matt?
No, just uh. I just added Art, I think, and.
So now they get to call him?
I don't remember it being asked.
Oh, you weren't. I didn't want to ask before, I just put it on there, that's it. I think I, the name changes maybe and, yeah.
Well, Art, I'd make sure you'd find out what the salary and benefits are.
Same as usual, probably.
All right.
We have to sign it somewhere?
Yeah.
Right here.
Have to sign it.
Right here.
Make a motion, the select board chair, sign the local hazard, uh, the local emergency management plan. I had to say the right title.
There a second to that motion?
Second.
All right, it's been motioned and seconded. Uh, any further conversation?
As soon as I've ever gotten done, right? It's just late. It's always late getting done.
But you do have extra.
I was gonna say, when's the due date?
May first. It's usually like after May first.
I was gonna say, usually it's like May fifteenth, May twentieth?
Yeah, exactly.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Give him twice what we gave him last year.
Oh, good. Thank you, cause I have a budget, so that's great.
I heard rumors that, I heard rumors that they had some really good donuts up here. That's why this got.
That's why you got here? Okay.
Rumor, rumor has.
There's some, there's a Jay Kibowski name mentioned here a few times, I mean.
Few times.
Has anybody ticked the qualifications? Never mind.
All right, wanna go on a mini grant conversation for four grand, wanna?
Um, yeah, I sent email with some information about this. Um, M E R P is a mun- municipal energy resilience program. I think we should apply for the mini grant of four thousand. Um, it's a community capacity grant and I think it would be helpful. When and if we do receive, well, we're gonna get a building assessment done. Um, we discussed that earlier. On this year, um, but there's a gap that seems to be between getting the assessment and then. Implementation of an energy resilient project, so I think it would be handy to maybe hire a consultant and that's eligible under this four thousand dollars.
This is the board's.
This is your COVID money at work.
Yes, and in the webinar that I watched, it was kind of like, everyone should apply for this and figure out how to use it.
They're still trying to figure out how to give the money away. No, I, no, I mean, you laugh, but seriously, there, I got notified at school that there's still a huge pot of money. That they haven't even created the agency yet to distribute it. It's just sitting there. They're just, I mean, that's what a lot of this is. They're just trying to figure out how to give the money out.
I could use some.
Yeah.
Well, I guess from the standpoint of the town can make, take advantage of it for a useful purpose, why not do it?
Let's pursue it.
Go ahead, go for it.
Are we, I, I guess we're not locked into anything. I mean, if we, I guess that's what I always fear with some of these. Did, did they talk about like? You know, you do the, you do the resiliency, whatever, and then you get this four grand and you're locked into over the next ten years, you've got a. and then you get this four grand and you're locked into over the next ten years, you've gotta complete all the things that are on the project.
I didn't hear that. I didn't hear that, um, it's kind of like, you know, you get your building assessment, get your report, look through it, see what you think are the priorities. And then go from there with your project.
I guess the worst case scenario is they do something like that, you send it back to them and say.
We did a blow door test at the Grange Hall a while back.
You did.
Did some minor modifications here and there.
Oh, is it, board want Katie to look into this?
I, hey, throw it out there and see what comes back.
Who would you like to be listed as a project director? That's part of the questionnaire.
Well, it seems to me that.
Remember how you put my name on that?
Am I the only young one that knows what this means?
What goes around, comes around, Matt.
No, I was just not him.
I, I think that this would be an excellent job for the man on the end down there. He's got all kinds of.
William's here.
The far end for me, I think would be appropriate. I mean, he's got all kinds of background in leadership and whatnot.
Works alone.
See if he, he just, I think I saw his hand starting to go up there.
Um, and then how much do you want me to request? The maximum amount?
Yeah, I'll, always, you always request the max, yeah.
I, I don't think we'll have any problem spending that.
I didn't think so either. So I'll go ahead and do that. That's all I have on that.
Okay.
You collected, did you hear that?
Nice job, Art. Nice job.
If you have trouble spelling Art's name, I can help you.
It's gonna be the project director?
Absolutely, he's a good man.
Thanks, George.
There's gotta be some committee that's gonna come up next that you can throw him under for.
Well, you can also use this money to form an energy committee and.
Yeah, no.
Not enough energy to form an.
That would be good, then, and then each committee member gets a thousand.
Do you have anything you wanna report, Heidi? Gloria?
No, all set.
Katie, do you have anything?
Um, just that green up is coming on May sixth, so it'll be next Saturday. Um, green up bags are available and just as an update for the board, um, I've registered for a free workshop to hear about the updates for twenty twenty-three M R G P stuff. Um, next Wednesday, eight to noon at the R R P C.
And, um, that's posted around town about cleanup, the date? Yeah, good. All right, George, you have any concerns?
I do not have anything this evening, but I am preparing a two or three hour presentation for our next board meeting on, uh, it'll be under select board concerns.
That's the one that you're gonna miss, isn't it? I, I don't have, oh, let me just say this, I was over by the bridge, uh, and I was talking to a couple of folks that live around there, giving them a little bit of an update. Uh, and one of the people, uh, Janine Nielsen, who usually, uh, you know, if she has some concerns, she'll give somebody a call. Uh, and I sent her some of the information that was passed on, um, by the contractor and the state and stuff. And so I just sent her some emails on that and, uh, she's happy that, you know, the town is doing its best to one, upgrade the bridge, of course, and, but the other is to let people know what's gonna happen over there and stuff, so I just wanna put that out there. That's all I have. Wrap.
Along that line, I assume sooner than later, and maybe this is a question for the contractor, um, uh, no, like, bridge closing date signs have gone up over there. And I know that I had a few people, well, one person from, what is it, Sunny Hill, um, reach out to me to, to like question, cause they knew it's, they know it's coming, but there's no signs yet that state, you know, targeted bridge closure, whatever.
So he said they're putting up their signs the first week of May.
Okay.
And I'm not sure what their signs say about a coming road closure.
We, we may wanna just reach out and find out. I know the detour was us, but just find out, like, in their first round of signs, is there gonna be a sign on either side of the bridge that says closing whenever? Cause it, it is a question. I know some people know, but there's been some other people that are reaching out that are like, is it still happening? Is it, you know, is it still closing? And it's more people up the road that use it as a main artery that, you know, they're not right there, so they're not on like the mailing list.
Uh, as a board, uh, not to sidetrack a little here, but as a board, are we s- still in agreement with Cash and the contractor about closing Gorge Road?
I certainly am.
I, I think we determined that for safety purposes, for the contractors, I think it makes sense.
Yes. Do you have anything, Art, you want to say?
No, I got it.
Okay, so I just wanted to have that so it's up to date with what our judgment is for as a select board's concerned. Art, do you have any concerns?
Uh, I moved that we adjourn.
All those in favor of the motion? We gotta keep going then. Yeah, going, all right. Uh, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?